Welcome to the study meeting of the Livonia City Council for Monday, May 16 of 2022. We will begin this evening's meeting with a offering of the Pledge of Allegiance from Vice President Laura Toy.
Thank you. I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Vice President Toy. Good evening, Livonia. This is a study meeting tonight. No votes will be taken, but a variety of motions will be offered by the City Council upon studying the items on the agenda this evening. Those motions may be in approving, a denying, or a referral to a committee of the whole. Those items will be formally voted on at the next City Council meeting, which will June 6th. There you go. At this time, I will note for the record that we have all members of the City Council present this evening, and I will go to audience communication. Does anybody in the audience wish to address the council on any item that is not on the agenda tonight? I see no one approaching the podium for audience communication. I will go to the City Council. Does the City Council have any announcements for the public for the meeting? I see none. At this time, we'll get right down to business. Item number one is the reappointment of David Bongero to the Livonia Planning Commission from the Office of the Mayor for a three-year term, which will expire on... Bongero, excuse me. Which will expire on June 9th of 2025. Is anybody here from the mayor's office?
Mr. President, I'm happy to introduce...
Mr. Terramino?
Really just like to offer my support and endorsement for another three-year term for Dave Bongero. He's been a valuable asset to the Planning Commission for the past several years. He brings a lot of expertise from the construction industry, and we're very happy to have him on the Planning Commission. I had suggested him two years ago with the mayor, and I'm very pleased that he was appointed, and he's here and can answer any questions you might have.
Thank you very much. Mr. Bongero, would you join us at the podium? And I apologize for mispronouncing your name there.
Oh, that's okay. I get it all the time. Good evening, everybody.
Good evening. Have you enjoyed your time on the Planning Commission?
Very much so. Yeah, I always say I get to work with some really talented people, and I've learned so much. I don't know a lot still, but I really enjoy it and learn from Mark's been the best. He's a wealth of knowledge, and I really enjoyed it. I think the city's great, and to see all the exciting new stuff coming in is really, really something I enjoy very much.
Thank you very much. Any motions from the council? Ms. McIntyre?
We are, as has been noted, very lucky to have Mr. Bongero on the commission. He brings a lot of relative experience and talent and definitely passion for development in the city of Livonia, and I'd like to offer this for approval on the consent agenda.
Mr. President.
Mr. Donavich?
Thank you, Mr. President. I also echo my colleagues' remarks about you, Mr. Bongero. You've done great work, talked to a lot of people in the city, you know, a ton of stuff about construction, and it makes sense to have someone like you in this position. And I'm really excited and happy that you wanted to continue your service to our city, and the city's fortunate to have someone like you in the Planning Commission. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Mr. McCullough?
Thank you, Council President. We're just going to keep the kudos going, all right? But I figured that I would, since I know you've... I've known you for a very long time. When you say you are being very bashful when you say your construction hours, you are probably one of the smartest people in the construction field.
Take it easy, Brian.
I'm giving you some kudos. Now, you know that. Business owner in the community from Bongero Construction and someone that is a go-to for all things construction subject matter. So we're very happy to have you on the commission and glad for another three years.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, I think looking at your resume and your experience, you're probably... You're one of those unicorns that brings the theory and the practice to the table, and that's important to have in these meetings. So we appreciate it.
Thank you.
I'll go to the audience. Any audience comments on the reappointment? I see none. Ms. McIntyre offered an approving for the consent agenda, which means that you do not have to come back to the regular meeting.
Okay.
It'll be voted on as part of the consent agenda. We thank you for your service, and have a nice evening. We appreciate you coming out.
Thanks for considering me, guys. I appreciate it. Take care. Have a great night.
You too.
You too.
So that'll be on consent. Item number two is a request for authorization to purchase 450 privacy screen voting booths from our city clerk, Ms. Nash, to replace old, broken voting booths used for voting privacy at polling stations throughout the city. This is coming from budgeted funds. Ms. Nash?
Thank you, President Jolly. To say that we could donate some to some museums would be an understatement. We have probably about six or seven different styles of voting booths coming through the years. I don't know if people remember 2000 with the hanging chads. We actually have booths that still have some of those little chads inside of them, like from when they were punched out.
Probably shouldn't tell people.
Well, no, they were punched. It was the correct... It was, you know, they came out. They weren't hanging. They came out. And so it is time that we replace these. The election workers, that's probably one of their biggest complaints when they come in, is the setup and takedown of this equipment. The new booths are user-friendly. They're much lighter. They won't take up as much space. It'll be considerably easier and more time management also for the election workers.
Mr. President?
Vice President Toy?
I'll move an approving for our clerk, who's done a superior job in keeping things straight in regards to our voting and the integrity thereof. So thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. Barr?
Suzy, I'm sorry if I missed this. What's the expected life of these new voting booths?
I'm trying, Mark.
I don't know, but they come in two parts. Well, they have... The nice thing about the new ones, what we have now are kind of suitcases, okay? So you have a suitcase, and inside is all these pieces. So when something breaks, we have a lot of things held together with duct tape. And so the new ones are more of a table with the four legs and a removable, replaceable, easy cardboard screen.
Okay.
So we can replace that without any issue. I use those currently, right now, during election time. When you come into City Hall, we will have tables set up for people when they're doing their absentee ballots. We have already the removable cardboard...
And you said the old ones were 20-plus years old?
Oh, at least.
Okay.
At least.
Thanks.
Yeah.
Ms. Nash, just because you refer to these as a tabletop structure, do we need chairs to go along with these?
No. We do not. The only place that we do... They're like a platform, and then they have the legs. So you're standing... It'll be the same height as the current booths right now. The only table that we do set up that has chairs is for our VAT, which is the voter-assisted terminal. So if we have someone that is handicapped or that they need to sit down, we can do that. And the nice thing about we do send... When we do send out to the precincts, we send out extra of these cardboard screens that they can set up at tables for people that don't want to stand and someone that just wants to sit, and they're not using the voter-assisted terminal, but they're using just... They have the traditional ballot, but they want to sit.
Sounds good. Thank you very much. Does anybody in the audience have any questions or comments on this? I don't see any. We have an approving from Vice President Toy. Is that for consent or regular?
Yes, please. Consent.
With no objections, that'll be on consent. We'll move on to item number three, a request to approve a designation of authorized depositories from Department of Finance to allow the city to collect property tax payments and water bills, as well as purchase certificates of deposit and pooled accounts at the provided financial institutions. Mr. Slater, welcome.
Good evening, council. This is a housekeeping item by charter. City Council approves our listed depositories, and so we've updated it to reflect mergers and acquisitions and such that happen over time. And so we're asking you that... Asking you to approve the updated list that was presented to you.
Thank you, Mr. Slater. Council?
So move.
We have a motion from Ms. Toy. Is that for consent, Ms. Toy?
Yes, please.
Seeing no objection from the council, do we have any audience communication? I see none. That's for consent. Thank you, Mr. Slater. Item number four is a request for authorization to purchase one 2022 Dodge Charger utilizing state-of-Michigan bid pricing. Request from the Department... Excuse me, the Division of Police to replace an unrepairable vehicle from budgeted funds. Good evening again, Chief.
Good evening, Council President, and good evening, Council members. This is a request, as President Jolly said, to replace one scout car that was damaged beyond repair. The Michigan Municipal Risk Management Association has paid off on the insurance, and with those funds, we'd like to buy the new Charger, and this is from budgeted funds. We would ask to waiver the sealed bid process as we're using the state-of-Michigan contract bidding, which is, as you know, great pricing, and it's from budgeted funds, I think I said. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you. Any questions or motions from the council? Mr. Donavich?
First and foremost, is the officer okay from some damage to the vehicle, you said?
Thank you for asking, Councilman. There were no injuries in the crash, so the officer is fine.
I'll be glad to offer an approving on consent, but there's no objection from my colleagues.
I see no objections. Any audience communication, comments, questions? I see none. You have a consent approving for item number four. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Have a nice evening. Item number five, a request for authorization to purchase five 2022 Ford Rangers utilizing the state-of-Michigan bid pricing for the Inspection Department to be used by Inspection Ordnance Department from budgeted funds. Mr. Hannah?
Good evening, council. As mentioned, we are looking to replace two of our vehicles for trade-in. One that will be going to scrap. Basically, we had an engine going. It's not worth the value of replacing it, and I had an additional employee added to our code enforcement department. So these five vehicles will be used for the use of the Inspection and Ordnance Department.
Thank you, Mr. Hannah. Motion from the council, Mr. McCullough?
I'll be happy to offer an approving on consent.
I have a question.
Mr. Donavich?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Hannah, what happens to the vehicles? I think it makes sense to have the Rangers. I mean, you guys do a very difficult job. You're throwing signs in the back of the truck and a lot of back-and-forth with tools and what have you, so I think it makes great sense. But what happens to the vehicles that ordinance used to use?
So what I'm going to do is the... I'm trading in... The vehicles I'm trading in are just high-mileage vehicles, so I'll just shift them around throughout my department. We switch vehicles often depending on the use of them as mileage goes anyways. So these vehicles will be moved into the ordinance and into... I have an inspector that also does ordinance enforcement, so it'll be used in that capacity.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have an approving from Mr. McCullough. Is there an objection to having that on consent? I see none. Any audience communication? I see none. You're all set, Mr. Hannah?
Thank you.
Item number six is a request to adjust water and sewer consumption rates, including an industrial surcharge rate and industrial waste control charge coming to us from the Department of Public Works to become effective on July 1 of 2022. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Thank you, Jacob Rushlow, Assistant Director of Public Works. The Department of Public Works and the Finance Department have worked together on the water and sewer rates proposed for implementation here coming up on July 1 of 2022. Connie Kumpel is here with me tonight from the Finance Department. She's the chief accountant to go over a little more of the detail of what those rate changes look like for this year.
Good evening.
Good evening. Today, I'm here to discuss the proposed water rate that would be a pass effective July 1, 2022. The goal of every public water system is to provide residents with clean, uninterrupted, fairly-priced water. For the city of Livonia, that means we buy our water from GLWA, and then Wayne County pipes it out to be cleaned. We also have a system in place to deliver the water, so we have capital costs involved with that, and all of these things go into building our water rate. So GLWA had an increase this year, their unit rate and their monthly fixed fee. We have yet to see Wayne County's rate package, but we do have an assumed rate increase built into the rate as well. We look at many factors when building out this rate, but we have a tendency to hone in on that average residential user. And so this year, you're looking at a 3% increase, which amounts to about $5 per quarter overall. So the primary factors, again, that go into this rate change are pass-through costs from our wholesalers, which are GLWA and Wayne County. And with that, pardon me, we'll open it up to questions.
So a question for me right off the bat here. You know, there's been a lot of information in regards to the Highland Park water debt.
Yeah.
Can you explain to what extent that was factored into these rate adjustments? I know we passed a resolution kind of refusing to pay that. Can you tell us that that actually was not considered as part of the rate increases? Or what's the status of that at this time?
So it's part of the... GLWA sets their revenue requirement, and it's built into that revenue requirement. So the city of Livonia has a $12 million revenue requirement that has to meet, and this year, I think the... I don't think I know. It's $40,000. So for a $12 million revenue requirement, the pass-through debt that was passed through the city of Livonia is 40,000, 4,600, I believe, is the amount. So what we did, as soon as we passed that council resolution, our water bill that we... Our very next water bill, which was the very next week, we reduced... We reduced our payment. Just we took the flat rate, divided by 12, and we took it right off the top of what we paid GLWA. So we have backed it off.
So our residents can be assured that they are not paying that debt at this time?
Correct.
Thank you very much. Mr. Barr?
So one follow-up to that. So the residents are still paying the rate. It's just that that portion of it, we're holding an escrow for now.
Yes.
Right, so the residents are still paying that, but it's conceivably... If things were to be resolved, that we don't have to pay that money, that would somehow be returned to residents.
Then it would be factored in. Yes, that's correct.
Yeah. Okay. A few other questions, and I appreciate the information you provided. I read through the packet, and a couple things I had questions on. One, you talk about the expected reduction in water sales charges. What do you mean by that? It's a... And it's... Sorry, I should probably give you more context. Incorporating an increase of wholesale charges from the GLWA and an expected reduction in water sales charges, the recommended new rates are this. Does that mean we're expecting to sell less water to our residents?
Yes, I believe that's been the trend for the last couple of years, and so that continues to be something that we anticipate going forward.
And so the impact that that has on the rates is what?
So the impact of that that has on the rates is that we... When you sell less water, you have a less spread to cover those fixed costs.
So the rate actually goes up, even though nominally...
Correct.
I assume people are actually paying less because they're using less.
Yeah.
Is that... That decreased usage, what do we attribute that to, that trend?
Yeah, I can answer that. So we've kind of talked about this a little bit in the past, but it goes into a couple factors. One is just being more conscious of how we're using water. You know, people don't as often, you know, maybe not brush their teeth while running the water the whole time. All these things that we've been told growing up now and put into practice for water conservation, as well as changes to things like fixtures and the water flow rate being, you know, low-flow devices, whether it's toilets, showerheads, faucet fixtures, are all also reducing the amount of water that flows through them every time they're turned on. So those are major factors on the residential level. And then in the industrial side, too, they've just realized, you know, instead of using huge amounts of water for cooling operations and water... Using water for processes, they've found ways to recycle that water through their system and clean it and reuse it, so they're not just running clean water through the meter all the time. So there's huge improvements in the efficiency on the industrial side as well.
Okay, thanks for explaining that. Another question, further down in the packet, you talk in the section on impact of water and sewer improvement projects. You talk about the footing drain disconnection system, which we've talked about here in the past. Can you help me... So, and just for residents' sake, program to significantly reduce the amount of clean water that's entering into our sanitary sewer system. Can you help me understand what impact that has up or down on the rates?
Yeah, so when you're looking at...
You had an impact section, but it wasn't clear on what the impact was, so...
Yeah, so it directly impacts rates because it's another capital improvement project.
So it's an increase... You're talking about the cost of the project is reflecting the rates. There's not a savings as a result of that necessarily?
There... And really, that is the crux behind why we're doing the program, is to reduce our flows that are going into the sanitary system, which then have to be treated, and, you know, all that good stuff at the Tribune plant before it's discharged back out into the river. So by reducing the amount of flow that we put into that system, we're reducing the future charge that we'll get from Wayne County and Great Lakes water for, you know, the sewage charges.
Okay, I've learned not to anticipate my number of questions, but I think I just have two more, okay? The nice question is, can you... This is an older topic, but I just need a quick refresher. We don't have to go into details, but the question that often comes up as to can we separate out the sewer... The sewer water from clean water versus being charged the same way for both, from a resident's perspective? I think we've looked at that in the past, and there's some practical reasons why that's not very feasible, but can you just give me a quick refresher on that?
Yeah, I mean, the... Excuse me. The easiest answer is there's no good, efficient way to monitor and meter low-flow gravity flow that would come out of your, you know, drain pipe in the sewer that comes into the system. Those small amounts of water, like every time you flush a toilet, you get a little surge through your sewer line that goes into the sewer main. Those are... It's really hard to pick up that small amount of flow that you're using that's going down the drain. For ease of that, water that comes into the house is water that's also going to go down the drain, and that's how that's calculated.
Yeah, and the reason I ask that, for residents' sake, and it's probably obvious, but just, I mean, unfortunately, when you're watering your lawn, you're paying that sewage cost. And when I added 10 inches to my above-ground pool this past weekend, I'm paying that sewage cost. So that's why I asked the question. I think we all wish that that could be split out, because it doesn't feel good knowing that, but there's some practical constraints that keep us from doing that. My last question is, we're always interested in how we compare to surrounding communities. You provided that data here. I notice there's one community that's below us right now, but I also know in the past, when we've had that situation, it's been because that community hasn't yet addressed their water rates, and it ultimately came up above. Do we anticipate ending up being the lowest, or do we think we're going to be second lowest when this is done? I know that's probably hard to say, but...
Yeah, that's a really difficult question to ask. I would hate to...
Do we know if Canton's adjusted their rates yet?
I do not. You know, the one thing I will say about Canton, and don't have to make any assumptions in this regard, but one thing Canton's done recently, the last couple of years, and they're currently working on another, is they're building water storage. So they have a brand-new... Well, not brand-new now, two years old, but a ground reservoir water storage facility that helps bring them into control with their peak flows. By doing that, you reduce your costs that you're getting from... We talked about the pass-through costs from GLWA, because now they have storage, they're able to control those peak flows, which costs a lot of money to have bigger pumps, bigger mains.
All right, Jacob, you did it. I was only going to ask two more, but now you created one more. Do we have any kind of... And again, this isn't a study meeting for that, but it's related to water rates. Is there any kind of update as to... We're looking into that, right?
Absolutely, yeah. And I'm glad you brought up that next question, because we are definitely looking into that. We've been looking into it. We are working on polishing up a preliminary engineering study right now, both in citing a facility like that for a water storage reservoir here in Livonia. You know, where exactly it would go, the sizing of it, what other capital improvements would be needed with surrounding mains in order to service that. So that study is actually occurring right now in the preliminary design phase.
Yeah, when do we anticipate having something to report out on that?
So the preliminary phase should be done in the next few months.
Okay.
Oops. Apologies. So that should be done in the next few months in the preliminary study phase, and then we'll be looking into meeting with Finance to talk about, okay, what does this look like for us, big picture, with total project costs and all that to move forward.
All right, well, it's worth noting... Thank you. That's the end of my questions. It's worth noting that unfortunately, with our rate of inflation, I mean, we're making money with a 3% increase in water rates, right? We could just invest in water rate. No, I'm just kidding. This is never anything that any of us enjoy, but as I've explained ad nauseam in the past at these meetings, and others have as well, this is essentially a pass-through cost for us, and the consequences of not... Of not raising these rates is we're putting the city at a deficit to find that money somewhere else. I mean, this is purely a pass-through cost for us. So as much as all of us are in the same boat and all of us hate it, I'll go ahead and put an approving on the table, please. Thanks.
Mr. President?
Ms. Toy?
With all that being said, that Mr. Rushlow went back and forth on, I think it begs for us to put this subject matter into the committee, probably the Environmental Committee, at least to look at it closer and study it more, so that we can go more in depth as time goes on, which is whenever it's appropriate, so that we don't necessarily have to, you know, really get into it at a study meeting. I mean, not that we can't get into it, but I mean, more information comes out in a committee a lot of times than it does at our council meetings. No offense. I mean, that's just a suggestion.
Well, I personally find these meetings very informative, but...
Yes, sir, of course.
No. I would be surprised if that's not already in a committee, but I'm going to take it as you're offering the motion at this time to put it into committee, and we'll do that research before the next regular.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
I'm just not clear, putting what topic into the committee?
Water in general.
Water rates and water usage?
Yeah, water and future plans.
I think it might be a committee already, but... So we have two motions and approving. We have a motion for committee to study our water usage and rates for the Environmental Committee, which I believe Ms. Toy chairs. Any other motions from the council? We'll keep those both on the regular.
Appreciate it.
At this time, I think we're all set on this matter. Any audience communication? I see none. Thank you very much. We'll see you on June 6th. Whether or not you want to come, we'll see you here. We'll be expecting you. At least, Mr. Rushlow. Okay, we'll go to item number seven, a proposed amendment to the Livonia Code of Ordinances as amended from the Department of Law to amend Chapter 37, Delivery and Placement of Written Materials to Title 8. Mr. Bernier?
Yes, good evening. This is kind of a cleanup of a motion of an ordinance that was passed by council back in 2020. I know the council, as a lot of people, are greatly concerned about the, for lack of a better word, the junk mail being thrown on the driveways and on the streets. The council passed an ordinance prohibiting that and requiring placement of certain items in certain locations. It's a tough ordinance to enforce because you have to catch somebody. Well, we caught somebody doing it, and they were actually charged with an offense, and a lawyer came up and suggested that our ordinance may have problems because it talks about unsolicited papers as opposed to just any paper. So we want to change it from the unsolicited to just any delivery on it, so therefore to close that loophole in that matter, so that the placement... What they were saying was, if it's solicited, then we have to prove that it's not that it was unsolicited. And we asked for their their list of people that were requesting it, and Nino says, they told us, no. So we thought it was easier to change the ordinance to say, any, any item that's delivered has to be placed in a certain locations.
So, Mr. Bernier, would this effectively just change the presumption?
It pretty much does. It doesn't make any difference whether it's solicited or unsolicited. If you throw that in the driveway, you're violating the ordinance. The issue that was raised was that if it was solicited and you threw it in the driveway, it wasn't a violation of the ordinance. And we had no way to show whether it was solicited or unsolicited, because we didn't have their their list of people who, from the companies. And unfortunately, what ended up happening is, it's a lot easier to keep, to catch the person making the delivery than the company who is doing it. Now, I will say, it did get everybody's attention at the big paper downtown. We had a meeting with three lawyers in my office last week. It did get their attention. Five years of writing letters to them that they ignored, didn't do anything. But when we charged somebody, it caught their attention, and they came into our office. They assure us that this problem is going to go away in July, because the advertising ones that they were throwing down, they're no longer gonna print those. They're gonna go all digital. So that eliminates a huge part of the problem. Probably the vast overwhelming majority of the problems we've had and the complaints we've heard.
So just, just to kind of understand the nuts and bolts of this.
Yes.
With the way that you're describing, I have to admit, I haven't, I haven't read a draft. Would there be, under the new ordinance, an affirmative defense if somebody had subscribed to a newspaper?
It's a violation, whether it's subscribed or unsubscribed, for you to put it, to put it in a place other than those areas that are allowed, which are the front, like the front porch, the front door receptacle for those items. So if they throw it, whether you subscribe or not, if they throw it in your driveway, it's a violation of the ordinance.
Okay, and that's good. That is good. I'm just trying to understand.
But hopefully, hopefully with the news that they gave us last week, from what I could see and what the inspection department has seen, almost all the complaints, it wasn't with the local newspaper. It was with those, the circulars that had been thrown on the street that were just purely advertising, that they want to claim as freedom of speech. It was nothing but advertising, and that is going to stop, they're gonna cease the printing of that and go digital on those.
The last thing I'll say about this, can we make sure that we, I mean, obviously, everybody's on notice when ordinances are changed and they're published in the newspaper. Can we make sure that the local media companies are notified of this with like a letter from your office? Because I, I'll tell you, I go for a lot of runs and a lot of walks in my neighborhood, and people who are subscribing to the papers, generally, their papers are ending up in the driveway as well.
We have tried. We haven't had a lot of cooperation from any of the papers, let's put it that way, whether it's the big ones or the smaller ones, in responding to us, which is why we took the step of charging somebody, and that did get their attention. The local paper is owned by the same company that's the big company. So they are aware of it. They know what we're doing. And they assure us that they're no longer gonna be printing those circulars anyway, so that's a big part of the problem. But we have sent them numerous, numerous letters, and to date, until we charge somebody, we haven't had any response from them.
Yeah, I, I love the effort, and I love everything we're doing to tackle this. I know there's been a constant discussion and investigation of what we can do probably for the last five years. I think it kind of predates a lot of people on the council at this point. I just, it's a little bit tough to think that somebody who's subscribing to the paper, if it ends up on someone's driveway, that will be a technical violation of the law? Because I think in practice, we know that a lot of those papers do end up on the driveways. And I guess I just, that's a tough pill for me to swallow. Is there a way that we could explore an affirmative defense for subscribe-to materials, or does that open a whole door of First Amendment issues there?
Well, there's a due cases, this came out, that drew no distinction between solicited and unsolicited materials. I think for now, the honest counsel, the best bet is to see what happens with the change come July, because if, biggest word in the English language, if they are true to their word, the problem should be pretty much eliminated, because I remember back in the day, they used to do mass deliveries of the local paper to try to get people interested. I haven't seen that in years, and as they indicated to us, their cost of printing is such that that's not no longer a business pattern of theirs. And so the ones that are getting delivered of the actual newspaper are those people who subscribe, and that seems to make a certain amount of sense. So I think it's best to see if this gets passed, see what happens after July, see if we do have a problem, and if we do, we go from there. But I think if they're true to their word, which I have no reason to doubt them, that the problem will be greatly reduced. Like I said, nobody wants to go after somebody who wants the newspaper. As I pointed out to the folks from the Free Press, when you have three or four newspapers pile up in the street, you're advertising nobody's home. And that becomes a public safety concern, and it's a, it's a blight concern, too. And they didn't seem to believe that, but that's fine. That's their belief. But the problem will be solved if, if what they say is true, it actually happens. I think most of the problem will be solved.
Thank you, sir. I think, Mr. Donovan, then, Mr. Barr?
Thank you, Mr. President. Thanks to the Law Department for taking this up and clarifying. I have no issue with whether it be unsolicited or solicited. At the end of the day, the circulator should be held to a standard, and that standard should be delivering the paper, regardless if it be a paper or advertisement, to a mailbox or a advertisement box or a front porch as opposed to someone's driveway. I think you can make the argument that regardless if you subscribe or don't subscribe to the paper, you don't want your paper, that paper being delivered to a driveway, at the end of your driveway. I think you anticipated it being delivered to an area where you could easily access your papers, such as a porch or a mailbox of some sort. I think truly this came down to circulators wanting to get these advertisements or papers to as many houses as possible in a certain amount of time, and them being lazy and littering our streets, to your point. It becomes a safety issue when you're advertising to, to people that have negative ideas and want to do bad things. They come to our town looking for homes like that, that have three or four papers at the end of their driveway, potentially thinking they could break into that home, or it becomes a blade issue where it just looks bad and looks very dirty. So I commend the department for taking this up and cleaning it up, and thanks for taking action. I know other communities have reached out to me, and others saying they're thankful that Livonia is doing this, and hopefully other communities jump on board. Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. Barr?
So surprisingly, because I, the intent of this effort, I am totally behind. I, I have a little bit of reservation about it just from the standpoint of, when we're talking about subscribed newspapers, not thrown in the driveway, we're talking about a practice that probably goes back at least a century. And the the main concern, as has been said, was people seeing that people aren't home. But back when I subscribed to a physical newspaper, you know, it was on me to cancel that or to hold that newspaper when I was gone. The issue, I didn't have a problem with that. What I have a problem with is stuff being dumped in my driveway when I'm gone that I didn't know to cancel. So I'm gonna, I have some more questions just about, from a legal perspective, how you, how you found this and understand some of that that I don't want to do here, both for time and also just because I don't want to step into waters that makes things more difficult legally. So Paul, I might reach out to you outside of here to understand that a little better, but just, I just want to say, it's not a, it's not a slam dunk for me to vote for this change, for the reasons that I expressed, so.
I will say this, and you talk about it's a time-honored, century-long tradition. I don't go back quite the whole century, but I do remember when I delivered the Free Press on my bicycle, I know the business has changed quite a bit. We had the list where we put it.
Right.
And if we didn't put it in somebody's door, or we didn't put it where they told, we were getting phone calls. The business has changed now, such as not, it's not the 14-year-old kid on his bicycle anymore. It's the adult driving down the road. And like Councilmember Donovan said, being lazy and wanting to maximize the amount.
Lazy or efficient? I mean, honestly.
It's lazy if it, if it doesn't hit the driveway. A lot of them don't hit the driveway.
Yeah, we just, we gotta remember, too, we have, we have newspapers here that have a business model that's tough right now. So I'm serious when I say you can look at it from an efficiency standpoint, you know? As somebody who delivered papers, I know how much extra effort it takes to put it up in the door than in the driveway.
There is no question it's efficient. I watched The Sopranos last night, and I saw him dumping waste in the swamp, and that was efficient, too.
Not a comparison, but that's a very unfair comparison. I do have one other question, just from a, Paul, from a procedural standpoint. If, if we approve this then at our next regular, does it then go to a public hearing because it's an ordinance change?
No.
No?
It would, it's an ordinance change, so if it gets approved, if it gets approved, it would go for a first vote and a second vote. First read, second read, and then it would get published.
Okay. All right, thanks.
Counsel President?
Mr. McCullough?
Just one, one add to this, and I'm sure Mr. Zalinsik can agree to this. I live in a cul-de-sac. They leave it, leave these papers right at the curb line. What happens during a rain? They go right down to a catch basin, and then they flood the streets. And honestly, I've pulled probably, just in my street alone, probably 20 over the years. It is, it's horrifying. So, I mean, honestly, and I go back to that, delivering papers, yeah, if you didn't put it on the porch or you missed it, you weren't getting a tip or anything like that, so.
So, Mr. Bernier, I'm curious if we, if we shared the same paper route, knowing where we both grew up. Separated by some years.
Did you pick your paper up at your Malaszewski's office?
Yeah.
On Bingham and Warner?
Yeah. What is the newspaper? Okay. We have an approving. Is that for consent?
It would have to be on regulars.
Oh, I'm sorry.
And that was on, by whom?
Okay, so that concludes our.
Mr. Jolly, I don't know that anybody made the motion.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought that Mr. Donovan did.
For the regular.
Mr. Donovan, have you made?
I'd like it on the regular.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, I make an offer to approve.
So we'll put this on the regular. That concludes our agenda for this evening. I will go back to audience communication. Does anybody in the audience wish to address the council? There is nobody approaching the podium at this time. We'll go to the council. Any last-minute closing remarks? I see none. It is 8:40. I will call the meeting closed. Good evening, Livonia.